Right. Good morning and no, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the UN Environment Programme Special Session on the Fifth Montevideo Programme for the Development and Periodic Review of Environmental Law. My name is Sally, I'm a Program Officer at UNEP and I'll be the moderator for this session. The Fifth Montevideo Programme for the Development and Periodic Review of Environmental Law, or Montevideo Programme V for short, is a 10-year intergovernmental programme focused on promoting, strengthening and implementing environmental rule of law worldwide. The UN Environment Programme, or UNEP for short, is the secretary of the programme. We have with us today Maria Socoro Mangitia, sorry, and Marina Di Marina, Marina Di Maria Venancio from the Secretariat of the Montevideo Environmental Law Programme at UNEP to provide an overview of the programme, to discuss its relevance in advancing environmental rule of law globally and to highlight opportunities for further engagement and collaboration. Today's session will consist of a presentation by Marina, followed by an interactive Q&amp;A session of about 25 to 30 minutes with both Maria and Marina. You can drop your questions and comments in the Q&amp;A box below and the panel will address them at the Q&amp;A session. I would like to kick off this special session by giving a brief introduction to Maria and Marina. Maria is a senior legal specialist at UNEP. She began her environmental law career at the Philippines Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. In 1999, she joined the Secretariat of Partnerships in Environmental Management for the Seas of East Asia. In 2001, she moved to the Environmental Law Centre of the International Union for Conservation in Borneo. From 2006 to 2016, she was with the Secretary of the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, or UNFCCC. Last year, she was seconded to the UNFCCC Secretariat to coordinate legal support for the Glasgow Climate Change Conference. She is currently based in Nairobi, Kenya, where she heads the National Environmental Law Unit of UNEP's Law Division. She has a degree in economics and a Juris Doctor degree from Ethune de Manila University. She obtained her Masters of Law degree from Harvard Law School and is a member of the Philippines and New York Bar. Marina has over 10 years of experience in the field of environmental law research and practice. She is currently working as an environmental law specialist at UNEP. She holds a Master's Degree in Law, Environment and Ecological Politics from the Federal University of Santa Catarina in Brazil. Ms. Venancio has authored and co-authored more than 40 publications in the field of domestic and international environmental law and was awarded the German Federal Ministry of Education and Research Green Talent Award for her research on agroecological public policies in 2016. It is now my pleasure to hand the floor over to Marina to give us an overview of the role of UNEP's Montevideo Programme V in advancing environmental rule of law globally. Marina, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Sally. Just a question, just a second, let me just share my screen. I hope you can see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you so much. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening colleagues. Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm Marina and I work for the Secretariat of UNEP's Montevideo Environmental Law Programme. Thank you so much Sally for the introduction. I'm also joining here today by Maria, who is the Senior Legal Officer in UNEP's Law Division. And we are very thankful for the opportunity to engage in this special event on the Montevideo Programme and provide you with background information about how the programme is structured and how to get more engaged. As you can see here on the screen, this presentation is divided into six topics and we'll be happy to take all your questions, as many questions as you have at the end of this presentation. So getting right to it, the history of the Montevideo Environmental Law Programme dates back to 1982 when UNEP's Governing Council adopted the first edition of the programme. Since then, UNEP's environmental law activities have been guided and coordinated through a series of 10-year programmes for the Development and Periodic Review of Environmental Law. These intergovernmental programmes were adopted either by UNEP's Governing Council, as you can see here, or the United Nations Environment Assembly, which succeeded at the Governing Council. The Governing Council was established in 1972 following the Stockholm Conference on the Human Environment as a forum to address emerging and pressing environmental policy issues. It was replaced in 2014 by the United Nations Environment Assembly, which is a body that enjoys universal membership and is the world's highest-level decision-making body on the environment. You can see here on the screen the five editions of the programme, as well as the respective Governing Council and UNEP resolutions that adopted them. We are currently in the fifth edition of the programme, the Montevideo Programme V, and this year actually marks the 40th anniversary of the Montevideo Environmental Law Programme. And those 40 years of history, the programme was responsible for creating relevant structures within the United Nations Environment Programme, such as working groups to develop guidelines and also has consistently set the strategy for UNEP's engagement in the field of environmental law. Important outcomes of the programme include technical legal assistance provided to countries and developing national legislation, for example, as well as the support provided to states and the development of international environmental legal instruments. In this context, it's relevant to say a few words about how the programme has been contributing to advancing environmental rule of law worldwide, globally and regionally. Environmental rule of law, as you're aware, is a concept that's still emerging and it's continuously evolving, but in broad terms, it incorporates the three components of the rule of law, namely accountability, fundamental rights and also inclusive development and applies them in the environment context. Among the core elements of environmental rule of law, we can highlight a few of them, such as fair, clean and implementable environmental laws, access to information, public participation and access to justice, accountability and integrity of institutions and decision-makers, clear and coordinated mandates and roles across different institutions, accessible, fair, impartial, timely and responsive dispute resolution mechanisms and the recognition of the mutually reinforcing relationship between rights, human rights and environmental rule of law. The programme has been contributing in various ways to advancing these core elements of environmental rule of law. We have highlighted here in this slide that you can see on your screen a few examples of relevant outcomes from the past editions of the programme. Concerning the Montevideo Programme V, for example, we can underscore the development of guidelines such as the 1985 Montreal Guidelines for the Protection of the Marine Environment Against Pollution from Land-Based Sources and the 1987 Cairo Guidelines and Principles for the Environmentally Sound Management of Hazardous Wastes. We can also highlight the support to the negotiation of important multilateral environmental agreements, as you can see here, such as the 1985 Vienna Convention for the Protection of the ozone layer and the 1989 Basel Convention on the Control of Transboundary Movements of Hazardous Wastes and their Disposal, as well as technical legal assistance provided to over 48 countries only in the first edition of the programme. In the context of the Montevideo Programme II, we can highlight support in developing regional agreements. And one example is the 1994 Luzaka Agreement on Cooperative Enforcement Operations Directed at Illegal Trade in Wild Fauna and Flora and also international agreements, such as the 1998 Convention on the Prior-Form Consent Procedure for Certain Hazardous Chemicals and Pesticides in International Trade, known as the Rottendon Convention and the 2001 Stockholm Convention on Persistent Organic Pollutants. This edition of the programme also contributed to developing several knowledge-sharing activities and we can mention here the Register of International Treaties and other agreements in the field of the environment, which was published in 2005. Additionally, one of the outcomes of the third edition of the programme was the launch of the UNEP FAO YSCN Database, known as ECOLEX. The Montevideo Programme III was also responsible for the development of a global judges programme, which included capacity-building activities, training workshops for the judiciary and other legal stakeholders, as well as the Global Judges Symposium on Sustainable Development and the Rule of Law that culminated in the Johannesburg Principles on the Rule of Law and Sustainable Development. And last but not least, under the auspices of the Montevideo Programme IV, important legal frameworks were negotiated, including the 2013 Minamata Convention of Mercury and the 2010 Nagoya Protocol on Access to Genetic Resources and the Fair and Equitable Sharing of Benefits arising from their utilisation and also the 2016 Kigali Amendment on the Montreal Protocol. Having said that, it's also worth noting that environmental rule of law seeks to address the implementation gap between the requirements of these environmental laws and multilateral agreements and their implementation and enforcement. And since the second edition of the programme, bridging this implementation gap has also been at the core of the programme, embedded in its objectives, strategies and activities. So we'd like to invite you to explore UNEP's website and also the Law/Environment Assistance Platform, which was launched last year to learn more about the programme's outcomes. And after highlighting a few of these achievements, I'd like to bring this discussion back to the present and the Fifth Montevideo Programme for the Development and Periodic Review of Environmental Law. The Montevideo Programme V was adopted in 2019 by the United Nations Environment Assembly and commenced in January 2020. It was designed to guide UNEP in collaboration with relevant stakeholders and identify and implementing priority areas in the field of environmental law. It encompasses seven objectives, which include supporting the development of adequate and effective environmental legislation, strengthening effective implementation of environmental law, supporting enhanced capacity building and supporting countries in developing and implementing environmental rule of law. Additionally, the programme also pinpoints nine strategic activities, including provide practical guidance, tools and resources to countries, promoting information and data exchange among legal stakeholders, promoting public participation, access to information and justice, supporting partnerships, facilitating education and awareness-raising activities in environmental law and also encouraging research on emerging environmental law issues. Concerning the institutional arrangements for the fifth edition of the Montevideo Programme, as Sally mentioned, UNEP is a secretariat and is responsible for implementing its activities, liaising with partners and stakeholders and promoting the exchange of information, experiences and best practices, among other things. Additionally, governments have been invited to designate national focal points to the programme and this focal point should preferably be senior government officials with expertise in environmental law. As of 31st of March 2022, the programme has 141 national focal points for member states, which meet at least every two years and global meetings of national focal points. For your information, the full list of national focal points, including their contact information, is available on UNAPLE, the platform I just mentioned. And there you can check the national focal point from your respective country. And in general terms, the national focal points are responsible for identifying and providing guidance on the priority areas for implementation of the programme, providing UNEP, the secretariat, with available national data in the field of environmental law. This includes information about national legislation, national case law and also providing strategic advice and direction to the secretariat in the delivery and implementation of the programme, contributing to catalysing action to address the many environmental challenges that we are facing. And furthermore, the programme has a Steering Committee for Implementation, which was established in 2021, so last year. The Steering Committee has 14 members representing all United Nations regions and the representatives, just for information, the representatives from the Asia-Pacific region to the Steering Committee are the national focal points from Bangladesh, Bhutan and Cambodia. The role of the Steering Committee is to work closely with UNEP in the implementation of the programme and more specifically, support the preparation of the so-called global meetings of national focal points and also act as a liaison with other national focal points and stakeholders in their respective regions. Last but not least, environmental law academics, experts, civil society organisations and other relevant stakeholders are invited to assist implementation and delivery of the programme as appropriate and this includes supporting technical legal assistance projects and identifying information for the UNAPLE platform, among other things. All in all, the Montevideo Programme V builds on the successes but also the lessons learned from the past editions of the programme and one of its distinguishing features is its results-oriented nature. Also, the Montevideo Programme V has partnerships hardwired into the text of the programme. This means, for example, that there are several efforts to bring stakeholders closer to the activities and implementation of the programme. As you can see here in paragraph five, the implementation guidelines, so you can see several references to the active engagement of youth and also the need to avoid duplication with other initiatives and activities in the field of environmental law and also the importance for the activities of the programme to be developed and implementation, coordination, cooperation or partnerships with relevant stakeholders. And the first global meeting of national focal points is one of the key entry points for participation in the upcoming months. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, the first global meeting of national focal points, which is the kickoff meeting of the programme, was divided into two different segments, an online session and an in-person hybrid session. The online segment took place from 2 to 4 June 2021 and focused on deciding on key aspects to kick-start implementation of the fifth edition of the programme. So national focal points gathered at this meeting and designated representatives to serve on the Steering Committee for Implementation, adopted the modalities of work of the Steering Committee and also decided on one initial priority area for the implementation of the programme and namely legal responses to the air pollution crisis. So here on the screen you can see a screenshot of the online session of the first global meeting of national focal point. And it's interesting to point out that after this segment, the secretariat has developed a roadmap for delivering this initial priority area and the roadmap include activities such as the launch and promotion of the first global assessment of air pollution legislation, which you can also see here on the screen, and a mapping exercise to identify key partners and stakeholders and also the development of a guide on ambient air quality legislation. The in-person session will take place from the 6th to the 9th of June 2022 in Nairobi in a hybrid format and the meeting agenda will focus on key substantive issues, including discussions on the full set of priority areas for implementation for the entire duration of the programme, the status of activities and funding, as well as on the elements of partnerships and stakeholder engagement strategy. And interested stakeholders and colleagues can get in touch with the secretariat through the email that is available on the last slide of this presentation and as to be included in our mailing list to receive more information about the event. There is also a call for side events, open to environmental law experts, civil society organisations, including children and youth organisations, members of the judiciary and any other interested stakeholders. The deadline for submitting a proposal for an online hybrid or in-person side event is on Friday next week, April 15. And we welcome proposal under the six thematic areas you can see on your screen, which include legal responses to the air pollution, climate and biodiversity crisis, access to justice, public participation, data exchange and also cross-cutting issues on international and national environmental law. So in a nutshell, this is what we wanted to highlight today about the history of the Montevideo Environmental Law Programme, its role in advancing environmental rule of law globally and how one can get more engaged in the activities. You can also see here the secretariat's email and also my personal email on the screen and just please do not hesitate to message us should you have any questions or comments. So now I'm just going to end the presentation here and I would like to ask if Maria would like to, my colleague Maria would like to compliment any of the things we discussed.
Thank you Marina and thank you to everyone who's tuned in to listen to our presentation. Nothing to add, just want to listen to any comments and suggestions you might have as well as any questions that you'd like to pose to us on the Montevideo Programme. Thank you.
Thank you Maria. So Sally, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you Marina and Maria. I would like to remind the participants that you can send in your questions and comments in the Q&amp;A box if you haven't done so. We have also shared some of the links in the chat box which will give you more information on the Montevideo Programme, including the promotional video about the programme, the full text of the programme in all six UN official languages and the programme's brochure. Do download and save them for later reference. So let us now move on to the Q&amp;A session. There is a hand raised. But I'm not sure how we can do that. Two hands raised. The technical team could help.
Yes. DC does.
Yes, Mr. Dass.
Sorry, sorry.
Please go ahead. Right. So let me fill some questions here to Marina and Maria. Concerning the call for side events, which you mentioned, can anyone submit a side event? What would be the criteria used to evaluate the proposal? Marina or Maria, would you like to comment?
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. So concerning the call for side events, the call is open to environmental law experts, civil society organisations, members of the judiciary and any other interested stakeholder or organisation that would like to submit a side event in the field of environmental law. And as I mentioned, the deadline is next Friday, so the 15th of April. And while reviewing the proposals, the secretariat identified a set of criteria, which included the alignment to the thematic areas that I highlighted in this slide. This also includes like general geographical, generational, gender representation of the proposed list of speakers, also opportunities for audience engagement. So if you see, we can share the link to the application form. There is a section in this form where you can explain how the side event will engage different stakeholder groups and also how do you expect to engage with the audience, like using, for example, like different meeting tools or different strategies. And one thing that it's interesting to point out that is just in order to try to accommodate as many side events as possible, priority will be given to proposals that are cosponsored by more than one entity. But this is not a hard requirement, so it's just, we can share the link to the side events in the chat box and we welcome also any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you Marina. There is a question about the role of enforcement and compliance. How would Montevideo's V approach the issue of compliance and enforcement of environmental law? Maria?
Sure. Thanks for that question. As Marina pointed out in the Environmental Rule of Law Report, enforcement and compliance came out as key issues that many countries grapple with. So in spite of the explosion of legislation on the protection of the environment, enforcement and compliance remain very serious issues. So in response to that need, under the Montevideo Programme, we have actually a dedicated stream that deals with implementation, enforcement and compliance. And under that stream of work, we have several activities. One is to develop what we call knowledge products or what you would call publications that address the question of enforcement in specific contexts. For example, we are currently developing a guide to enforcement of the Montreal Protocol, especially in light of the Kigali Amendment to the Montreal Protocol and how enforcement can be strengthened, approaches that can be used for more effective enforcement. So there's that category of activities. We also engage in a lot of country level or regional level support for strengthening the capacity of countries and regions and subregions to enforce legislation that is already in place. And that capacity building can start from just awareness raising because you find often that those actors in the enforcement chain are not really aware of what laws there are in the environmental sphere and what other legal tools beyond environmental law they can use to strengthen enforcement. So it can be a simple matter of awareness raising. We do a lot of that with the prosecutors, with the judges. We also sponsor a lot of exchange of information and knowledge at regional and subregional level to see what techniques have worked with regard to enforcement in some countries, how they can be replicated in other countries and what challenges have been faced so that there's a very honest exchange of views on what those challenges are and how they might be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. That here's an interesting question. So this morning's session looked at the importance of indigenous people and some of the challenges faced by EHRDs. Now, could you outline some of the steps perhaps that you might have to enhance the protection of EHRD and IP?
I can take that if you want Marina. So yes, protection of environmental human rights defenders is actually one of the key pillars of the work that we are doing under Montevideo. And again, I start with a basic of awareness raising, letting environmental human rights defenders and more broadly, all stakeholders for that matter, know what rights they have, what we call the procedural rights, the right to information on matters relating to the environment, access to justice, what exactly are the procedural remedies that are available to them if they want to champion in an environmental cause and in the unfortunate event that some of them are persecuted or even brought to court for their activism. We do have resources. We have a dedicated website that shows what resources they can use, what materials are available, also which offices might be able to help them in the country where they are. And once in a while, we also issue statements to support these environmental human rights defenders, not to prejudge, of course, any case that is brought against anybody, but to emphasise that the rule of law must prevail and that everybody must be given their day in court. So perhaps I can look for the website and put on the chat the URL to that resource that environmental human rights defenders can use.
Yeah, that will be very, very helpful indeed. I think, you know, in our work, what we really need to do is not just to spoon feed, but really provide a typology, to provide the tools so that they could actually help develop their own strategy and their own tools in bringing justice and environmental rule of law into their system. Thank you Maria. Yes, yes Marina.
Can I just, so just complimenting, also in line with UNEP's defender policy, later this year, UNEP will launch a microsite and a publication presenting good practices on legal institutional mechanisms for environmental defenders. And also for later this year, UNEP will be publishing and working on a handbook for journalists and media practitioners on reporting and supporting environmental defenders. So these are a few of the knowledge resources that are coming out later in the year. Over to you Sally.
Thank you. There is another question. So So the recent review of SDG sixteen showed that there has been a decline in strong institutions, especially in Asia-Pacific. One in particular, one area in particular was in the area of oceans and fisheries. Is that something that you would look at as well? Maria?
Thanks. Yeah, in the area of fisheries, FAO is the lead UN entity, but we work very closely with FAO in the area of fisheries. For example, there was just a recent meeting of experts on defining crimes relating to fisheries in the sphere of the environment. So a guide is coming out on that. On oceans, we do a lot of work in the marine environment. And part of what we support, both technically and financially, are activities to make sure that regional action programs on the protection of the marine environment are actually implemented through work programs, more concrete work plans, as well as the development of legislation, so laws and regulations in the countries that are cooperating under the umbrella of these regional agreements.
Marina, would you like to add on to? All right, thank you. So there is a question, actually, I'll follow on to the enforcement and compliance. And that is that, you know, do we actually have experience or already have experiences in enforcement? And what are the essential process used? Could you share a little bit about that?
Sure. Actually, in Asia-Pacific, there was the Regional Enforcement Network. It was a project that, I believe, ended one or two years ago. And as a result of the facilitation of the creation of a network within the Asia region of enforcement officers, we actually have statistics that show that the illegal import and export of environmentally sensitive materials was reduced because of the support given to this network. No? So I can look for the link to the report of that. But so we can see that on the ground, the enforcement work is making a difference. And also our engagement with judges and magistrates, as well as those who come before judicial authorities, making a difference. I remember that a few years ago, there was a workshop in Pakistan on environmental law with the judges and magistrates. And we tracked that that awareness raising activity actually increased the number of cases relating to the environment that were filed before the courts of Pakistan.
Thank you. I'm far interested in this myself because this is also a new area for me because my background is in counter-wire trafficking, but I can see that there's a lot of synergies there. And, you know, I've seen a lot of tools developed as well, as well as law enforcement networks. So this is something that we can definitely look into how we could sort of combine resources and build up the network and cooperation as well. Let's see. Right. You mentioned that the Law and Environment Assistance Platform, UNAP LEAP, during your presentation, could you please explain the purpose of this platform and what one can expect to find there?
I can take this question, just to let also colleagues. Thank you so much for the questions in the chat box. And just apologies, I have just been informed by a web developer that the website today is under maintenance. So because of that, I'm sharing the document for the call for side events. And all the instructions are in the document that I posted in the chat box. And the website should be back online soon, but apologies for that. But just as a whole, the UNAP Law Environment Assistance Platform, it was officially launched last year during the online session of the first global meeting of national focal points. And UNAP LEAP is the principal online delivery mechanism for the program and helps the implementation of the program, and also helps the promotion of information on environmental rule of law. So in general terms, like it is the primary UNAP database for national level legislation. And we are working on expand the knowledge base of the platform with more laws from different countries. It also includes a clearinghouse mechanism, so a technical assistance, technical legal assistance section. And this section is designed for countries to request support directly to the UNAP secretariat. And I invite you to check the website when it's available. But the links were shared by Sally earlier today here in the chat box. And in general terms, the platform has this three main sections. So a technical assistance one for support requests, a second one, which is a knowledge base. And in this knowledge base, you may find a national laws, also UNAP flagship publications, also materials from our partners, courses, online courses, and different types of information. And there is also a third section, which is a country profile section. And in this country profiles, you can look for your country and see like the different resources that the database has on the specific country. So you can expect to find case law, national laws, environmental law experts, and also the contact information for the national focal points of the respective country. So in a nutshell, this platform is meant to also help the secretariat to follow up on this technical assistance requests and deliver the activities under the program.
Thank you. So earlier, you know, relating to a question you mentioned, and Maria actually mentioned about one of the law enforcement activities that has been done before already. And the Montevideo Program Five implementation was officially commenced in January 2020. So are there any other activities that you can provide information on that have been implemented since then?
So maybe I can start and I can hand the floor to Maria. So as I mentioned, the kickoff meeting, the first global meeting of national focal points was supposed to take place in Rio in 2020. But this was right when the COVID pandemic started. So the meeting was divided into two segments, the online segment and the in-person segment. And in this online segment, National Focal Points decided on this first substantive priority area for implementation to be in place until the in-person discussions. And that's when the substantive activities started. And I think Maria can say more words about that. But also, in the meantime, the secretariat has developed UNAP LEAP, the platform I've been talking about. And in this platform, also the technical assistance section to see how to help the secretariat manage these requests. And also, the secretariat has been engaging in developing outreach activities to national, to countries, and also to stakeholders, presenting the program, and also trying to improve the number of nominations of national focal points. The secretariat has also developed a series of communication materials, like the ones like Sally kindly shared in the chat box. So you can see like a brochure about the program. And then the UNAP LEAP will also find fact sheet for partners, fact sheet for national focal points. And also internally, we've been seeking alignment with UNAP's midterm strategy and the program of work and fostering synergies between like different ongoing initiatives on environmental rule of law. But now I'll give the floor to Maria. Over to you, Maria.
Thank you. We've actually engaged a lot with the national focal points since they are key to finding more information about developments and challenges on environmental law in their countries. For instance, Marina referring to the first Global Assessment of Air Pollution Legislation, a lot of the information that is analyzed in that assessment came from the national focal points. We are also currently developing a guide to medical waste in times of pandemics. And there was a lot of consultation that went on with the national focal points on that guide, which we hope will come out this year. So in spite of the challenges of not being able to meet face to face, I think we've engaged quite a lot with the national focal points to get the products developed in a way that responds to the needs of countries. And also, we've had a lot of meetings with stakeholder groups that might want to be more involved. For instance, we just had a meeting with the youth who want to participate in the meeting that will happen in June, and other stakeholders, UN entities, and non-governmental organizations alike. Thanks.
Thank you. I actually feel that in the last two years due to the pandemic, right? Actually, there is a closer collaboration among all the different stakeholders in the different jurisdictions, simply because you don't have to worry about logistics of traveling and accommodation. So I think this is the way to go. I'm glad that there are already activities going on despite the pandemic itself. And again, there is a question again relating to enforcement. So the question is from Lauren Kong. And it is regarding actual experience on enforcement. May we know where or for whom can we seek assistance from, particularly on prosecution, implementation, or decision? This is tricky, especially when involving two separate jurisdictions, country one against country two. I mean, this talks about transboundary cooperation. So perhaps, Maria, you would like to kick off the comments?
Sure, indeed. Yeah, enforcement between two jurisdictions poses more challenges. But I think in the context of a lot of the meetings that we convene, we've been able to foster this exchange of information and collaboration. It's a little more difficult to speak of specific cases because of the nature of the work that UNAP does. We don't generally get involved in specific cases. We point to potential resources that are available to help in transboundary cooperation. But if we can in any way help in facilitating dialogue between the actors in two jurisdictions, then we would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in my work, there has been a lot of requests for networking. So it's not just like you say, Maria, where you have, you know, cases itself because that can become too sensitive to discuss as well. It's hard to share case studies on that, not impossible. But one of the things that, especially as what Lauren has mentioned, that, you know, they don't know who to seek assistance from, even from their counterparts in other countries. And I found that, you know, just having meetings for them to network within the region or even globally has a lot of value in terms of seeking assistance, not just formal but informal assistance as well. Because that's where all the information can come through, where you could then effectively and efficiently enforce the issue. Thank you. There is, we have time maybe for just one more question. And this is from Marius Panahon. It is specifically regarding the Philippines. Now, in the Philippines, you have the Rito Kalikasan, and it's a legal remedy under the Philippines law that provides protection on one's constitutional right to a healthy environment, as outlined in section sixteen in the constitution. So they can petition in environmental courts, provided there are two or more provinces involved. Now, unfortunately, this remedy is applicable only under such circumstances. So how, the question is, how can we address and explore such environmental issues in a more inclusive manner? And I would add that, you know, how can the other countries learn from this Rito Kalikasan? Because it has been shared as a model within the region quite a fair bit. Maria, would you like to take that?
Thanks. If I understood the question correctly, the challenge seems to be that the requirement of having at least two jurisdictions involved has not been met in the particular case that is being talked about, no? And so if my understanding of the problem is correct, and they say, how can we address and explore such environmental issues in a more inclusive manner? I suppose, well, the first thing is to try and get involvement of another jurisdiction that is involved in the same problem. And if there is reluctance on the part of the other local government unit to get involved, one possible option is to use the power of the stakeholders in that jurisdiction to show that there is a very strong demand for that local government unit to also join the other local government unit. And that is where the use of procedural rights comes into play. So I think if people in those other jurisdictions who might be reluctant can then make sure that they are using all available procedural remedies to be heard by their local government unit, then that may increase the chances of meeting the specific requirements of this RIT. So I don't know if we've understood the question correctly. And please correct us if there was another angle that we haven't been able to see.
Yeah, thank you. And again, the Philippines is a leader in the region when it comes to environmental law rules of procedure because they do have one. And again, the region is looking at the Philippines model as well. That's the foundation of course, enforcing environmental rule of law. And this again brings up the need for networking and collaboration, not just within countries, between countries, but rather even within a country amongst the provinces itself. That is something that can be promoted. And it's all very, very good questions. But I think we're up to our time limit now. Thank you very much. I think this has been a very informative session. Before I thank the participants and close the meeting, Maria, do you have any last remarks that you would like to give?
Thanks, Sally. First, a big thanks to everybody who made time to join us. And thank you for the interest in the work of the Montevideo Environmental Law Program. We do hope to see you, even if it's only virtually, at the June meeting. And please do submit proposals for side events because we want to enrich the discussion on emerging issues in environmental law. So we would very much welcome your proposals on side events. So thank you very much to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll make sure that the organizer will find some way of sharing the links on the lobby or the main page so that the other participants who may not be able to attend our session today will be able to have access and information as well on this program. So thank you so much, Marina and Maria. And thank you all of you who are participating. Have a good afternoon. Thank you.